Are we ready? Okay. Welcome to the June 23 regular meeting of the Calaveras County Planning Commission. And let's get started with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Are there any staff announcements? Agenda changes? Just the item that is marked on the agenda? Then this is an opportunity for the public to speak to the commission on any item of interest or within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission but not on the agenda today. Is there anyone online or in the audience who would like to speak?
No.
Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period and move on to the consent agenda, which consists of the approval of minutes from May 12. Is there any member of the public or the commission who would like to remove this item from the consent agenda for discussion? Are there any comments on the item? Any minor corrections? No. Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the minutes as written.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None passes 4-0 with one open seat. Then Gina, you are up for item 12022-006 zoning amendment for Quentin and Lisa Failing.
Good morning, everyone. Getting started with this morning, yes, we are going to further discuss application 2022-006. It's a zoning amendment for Quentin and Lisa Failing. Oh, good, it's working. So proposed is an amendment to zoning of accessory parcel number 046004002, which is a 0.82 acre parcel located at 2182 Highway 12 in Burson and being zoned from A1 general agriculture to RR rural residential for consistency with a contiguous parcel also owned by the So the subject parcel again is located at 2182 Highway 12 approximately a mile and a half east of Burson Road and Highway 12 intersection in the Burson community. The parcel happens to be designated in the county general plan as working lands. Working lands are suitable for agriculture and forestry uses, generally speaking are smaller than those parcels in the resource production designation, parcels of 20 to 40 acres in size. Compatible zoning with the working land designation happens to be a wide variety of zoning, including general forest, timber production, general agriculture, agriculture preserve, residential agriculture, the proposed rural residential zone, rural home industry zone, recreation, and public service. This parcel happened to be zoned A1 via sectional zoning map number two. It's an oldie but a goodie, back from the 1960s. So if you're not familiar with sectional zoning maps, those were zoning maps that literally zoned areas rather than specific parcels. And so not even understanding what this parcel looked like back then, it could very well have been what it is today, but regardless, it was a zoning of an area and most of that area down in that western end of the county is zoned, that is still zoned A1 today, was actually zoned by that sectional zoning map number two. So the A1 zone is actually intended to be our main resource production zone. It is to classify areas for general farming and ranching practices. It is the purpose of the A1 zone that residential uses are placed in a position of secondary importance when compared to the commercial scale of production in food and fiber. So if you look at the parcel and its location and its size and its complete build out, the A1 zone just doesn't make any sense. More compatible is actually the rural residential zoning, which is what they're proposing. The rural residential zone intends to provide lands for personal ranches in which residential uses is a primary land use. The RR zone is established to permit small-scale farming primarily for personal use and not as a primary use of the property. There is currently no agriculture on site. It is a residence with some residential outbuildings, so it is more appropriate for it to be zoned rural residential rather than the existing zoning of A1. So if we take a look at the surrounding area, I apologize, I don't have a legend, but we'll go through the color combinations that I have before you. It is a mixed-use area consisting of commercial, industrial, residential, and agricultural zones alike. The gray color identifies parcels that are currently zoned rural residential. The orange color identifies parcels that are currently zoned A1 general agriculture. The green color represents parcels that are currently in the ag preserve. And then down in the middle of the parcel, I should have colored it red, but I colored it purple. It's actually the commercial zone that we have in this general vicinity. And then just north of the parcel, subject parcel off on the other side of Evans Road is that kind of turquoise blue. That's an industrial piece. It was once an industrial use. I think if I recall correctly, it was an auto dismantling yard at one time. I'm uncertain as to whether or not it's actually still in operation. I think it's been closed down for a number of years. But if you look at the colors represented in the zoning, you'll see obviously it is a mix of use, but there is a wide range of rural residential zoning surrounding the parcel. In addition, the majority of the parcels even on the south side of Highway 12 are zoned rural residential. So just to kind of give you an idea of what actually is existing out there, I think you've all looked at the aerial photography. I'm sure you've read the report. Access to the subject parcel is via an existing residential encroachment off of Highway 12. There's nothing to be proposed as far as changes. It is currently served by an onsite well and onsite wastewater system as the parcel is not located within an area of district water or sewage disposal that would otherwise provide that infrastructure to the parcel. It is developed with a single-family residence. In addition, there are two approximately 1,584 square foot metal storage carport structures. The entire parcel itself is gravelled. Everything is disturbed. It's compacted with contiguous driveway areas surrounding all of the structures. So this caused several of you some confusion and rightfully so. So the parcel, the subject parcel, if you look at the map, the aerial photo that I gave you and the location of the parcel layer on the GIS, it appears that the parcel boundary would go right through the Failing's property. And it looks as though it separates the house from the accessory structures when in fact it doesn't. So the parcel layer is actually off. So the parcel layer, the parcel boundary that is down through the, that looks like it bisects the development is actually more towards the west. So all of that, all of those structures are actually on the same parcel and not separated by legal parcel. Does that make sense? So real quickly, biological resources. There is Bear Creek that runs through the, clips the very northern corner of the parcel. Although the CNDDB identifies special status species within five-mile radius of the subject parcel, this parcel is not in any designated critical habitat areas. And given the parcel size and the completely disturbed parcel with buildings and compacted driveways, there's really no suitable habitat on the parcel that would support any such species. The parcel itself is pretty much void of any natural vegetation as again, it is completely developed with driveway buildings and what we'd consider commercial landscaping. So the application was circulated to various agencies, county departments, public agencies, state agencies, in addition to every property owner within a 300-foot radius of the subject parcel. That circulation was for 30 days. For that, we received no comments and no other concerns from any of the, any of the agencies or the adjacent property owners relative to the request for a rezone. So under the environmental review, we did find a categorical exemption. It's called the common sense exemption. This activity is covered by the common sense exemption under CECL, which applies only to projects which have the potential for causing a significant effect to the environment. Rezoning the subject parcel from A1 to RA, or excuse me, RR will result in less intensive permitted uses being allowed to occur. If you put the two zoning codes side by side, you can see the wide range of uses that would normally be allowed in the A1 zone that just simply don't exist in the RR zone. One of those primarily would be special events. You can't conduct any special events in the rural residential zone district without first getting approval of a permit, where in the A1 zone, you can actually have up to 12 special events a year as a permitted use, just as an example. The potential for residential development will not change as both zones allow a single-family residence and one accessory dwelling unit. The parcel is again completely disturbed with commercial landscaping structures and compacted driveway surfaces. Being only a 0.82 acre parcel in size and completely developed, the parcel is not conducive to commercial-scale agriculture. In terms of evaluation of property uses, the zoning amendment from A1 to RR is actually considered to be a downzone by further restricting the uses of the land to residential and small-scale personal farming activities compared to the current allowed commercial scaled agriculture So in conclusion, staff finds the proposed rezone to RR consistent with the general plan, including the general plan implementation measures required, requiring review of development applications and applicable and compatible with surrounding land uses and zoning. The project will not have a significant effect on the environment due to the zoning restrictions and the existing site limitations. The proposed zone is consistent with the current use of the property and more beneficial as RR zoned lots because the resident, because residential is the primary use of the land in RR. In addition, the production of food and fiber on a commercial scale is not conducive on a parcel of 0.82 acres. So our recommendation to you is to pass this along to the board with a positive recommendation for approval. Any questions?
No, you've taken care of it.
Yeah, really nice presentation.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to make any comments? Is there any member of the public who would like to make a comment? Anybody online? Nope, seeing none. Public comment portion is closed. And commissioners, would you, are you ready to hear the recommendation or do you have any comments on the resolution?
I did, but I passed them along to Gina Catherine earlier. I can tell you what they were.
That'd be a good idea.
They were Kelly's standard, you know, grammatical spelling errors. There wasn't anything significant that like changed the content of the ordinance itself or I should say the resolution, but.
Page one, numbered paragraph one, central last line. Notice of exemption reflects independent judgment. Judgment's misspelled, has an extra E. Nothing else on the resolution but the notice of exemption had two errors. Just before the signature line, reasons why a project is exempt reads no possibility that activity will significantly, has an extra N.
Yes.
Effect, the environment should be affect. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Wister. I think we're ready to hear your recommendation.
Staff recommends a planning commission take the following actions. Approve resolution 2022-005 recommending the Board of Supervisors amend zoning of APN 046004002 from general agriculture A1 to rural residential RR and approve the notice of exemption.
I move that we adopt the resolution as amended.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Passes 4-0 with one vacant commissioner seat. Item two, 24.
Just for clarification, we will set this up for a board hearing and I will go ahead and email you and let you know when that hearing will be similar to this. Actually, it might take a little bit longer. We have a tendency to get put on to the end of the board agenda, but I'll notify you.
Item two, 2014-023 tentative parcel map for Hertzick. And I imagine this is Gina again. It's a one-woman show right now. I'm just happy I'm figuring this PowerPoint stuff out. Okay, moving on.
You'll want to share it.
Oh, sorry. Guess you don't want to look at me. In quadruplate.
You want to go to the Zoom screen and then share.
The Zoom screen. Is it working?
Well, it was.
No, Susan, it's still not working.
It's not showing.
I did something wrong.
Oh.
Oh, I have to select it.
I guess we're gonna.
It looks so easy when TSD does it.
Let's just start it over.
Oh, there it is.
Is this the one or not?
Yes, that one.
Okay. Sorry, I don't do very well with these pads.
Yay. Yep, that's it, thank you. Okay. I think we got it together now.
That's right. We all went one way.
That's right. Okay. 2014-023 tentative parcel map for John and Roxanna Hertzick. So the applicant is requesting approval of a tentative parcel map to divide a 132.3 acre parcel into three parcels ranging in size from 40.11 acres to 51.69 acres in The subject property is located at 048002095 and located in the southwest corner of Camp Osaco and Watertown roads approximately two and a half miles north of the town of Valley Springs.
It's not changing.
You need to turn your slideshow. Mine is a slideshow map.
Mine is fine. How come yours is not?
That is very odd. All right, let's.
Stop sharing?
Yeah, let's try it again. So put that down. I think what happened is you ended up getting back into this, so let's close that.
Close this one?
Yeah, let's just close it for a minute and then.
This is supposed to make things easier. I think I have to open.
Yeah, you're right. All right, let's, let's open it again. Oh, actually, you know what? It should, we should be able to see that here. Let me, let me, oh, sorry. Okay, well, let's just share it and we'll see what happens. Now go to window.
Window.
Now hit your thing. Hit share.
Hit share.
And now go into slideshow or whatever, however you're going to do your thing. Now let's. I don't know why it's not doing it, what it's supposed to do. All right, let's. Doesn't make sense. So the last time you had it open, right? First?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Gina, can you send that down?
Oh, you know what? Let's try this.
Try what?
Go ahead and share again. And let's see what comes up on there. We don't want that. It's not bringing your, what, your, your stuff up though. You're supposed to, you should be able to see your desktop from here.
Gina, do you want to send the document to me?
Oh, I can do that.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Actually, here, get that to a net. There's more than one way to skin a cat. Okay.
You can just get out of this.
Get out of this.
Get out of this.
We'll put a net in control.
Yeah, just get out of the Zoom meeting.
Get out of the Zoom?
Yeah, because there's no point in having you as another panelist for anything since you're not.
Ooh, that was, pre-science fiction exit there.
I haven't seen so many multiples. I have my hair cut and I bother shit.
I can turn my laptop around so you can see.
Yeah, there you go.
Sorry, I don't, I don't know why you're not seeing your whole desktop when you start to screen your.
Well, it's just odd that the first, the slideshow shows up, but it doesn't roll through the changes.
Yeah, that's weird.
Yeah, see, Earth doesn't show all that stuff, so she should have been able to do that. I don't, I don't know, yours, for some reason, you're not coming up. Go ahead and hit screen two, that's what you want.
Yeah.
And then go ahead and start your slideshow.
Full screen, we got it. Okay.
And let's see if we can. Okay, now do your slide down there. Well, that also didn't come up.
There we go.
Yep, there we go.
Okay. All right, and that's just going to have to follow along. She's got this. Okay, next screen. And next screen. There we go. Okay. So the subject parcel is designated in county general plan as resource production. As most of you already know, the resource production designation identifies those lands capable of and primarily used for agriculture operations, timber production, and/or mineral resource production. The designation includes but is not limited to lands with conservation easements, lands designated as critical habitat areas, agriculture preserves, as well as timber production. The general plan identifies resource production lands as parcels ranging in size from 40 acres to 160 acres. Upon notice of non-renewal, the parcel was rezoned from agriculture preserve to A1 in the year 2000. The minimum lot size of par, for parcels in the A1 zone served by individual wells and onsite wastewater systems is 20 acres. The proposed parcels are physically suitable to accommodate the future construction of a single-family residence on, as well as permitted accessory structures while still retaining enough acreage for agricultural uses. Three surveys were conducted, biological surveys were conducted, 2014, 2016, and again in 2018. This property's been very well studied. During the first field survey, two seasonal drainages were observed, one in the northwestern portion of proposed parcel one and the other in the southwestern portion of proposed parcel three. The drainage in proposed parcel one drains from the pond located on the adjacent parcel on the north side of Camp Osaco Road and crosses into the subject parcel near the existing encroachment. The smaller drainage begins, the smaller drainage begins on parcel three and contains two man-made earth and dams forming two ponds which are lined with cattails. These farm ponds provided water for the cattle that were grazing on site, but according to the survey, did not contain water year-round under drought conditions. In 2014, surveys determined that there were four protected species listed as having possible occurrences which might be found in three vernal pools on the subject property. Those were vernal pool fairy shrimp, California tiger salamander, western spade foot, and the delta button celery. The biologists at that time recommended further surveys to be conducted during the wet season in order to determine whether or not any of those least listed species were present in those vernal pools. Then in 2016, the survey revealed only two vernal pools on site rather than three. The biologists also clarified that the farm ponds in the southwestern portion are in fact not vernal pools and that the. not vernal pools, and that the third pool he identified in the 2014 survey was just a depression adjacent to one of the farm ponds. The biologists observed only bullfrogs inhabiting the pools regularly and did not observe, and did not observe any evidence of, of the presence of any of the protected species that were identified above. In the end, the 2018 survey recommended that the protection of vernal pool number one in the Proposed Parcel 3, the access road in, in Proposed Parcel 3 needed to be moved 200 feet down slope. But we will go through the driveway situation in the next slide. But in the end, with the inclusion of the 50-foot common access and public utility easement to serve Parcel 3, the relocation of the existing encroachment road segment is no longer relevant. In the end, there were no significant impacts to the biological resources found, and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife reviewed the biological reports and concurred with the conclusion. Here again, this application was circulated to various county departments, local, state, and federal agencies. I keep hitting this next screen. As a result, oh, as well as special interest groups, as a result, we received relevant comments from the County Public Works Department requiring the normal regulatory compliance with applicable regulations of the county road ordinance, stormwater quality ordinance, grading and draining, drainage ordinances, as well as the subdivision map act. Memos from the County Environmental Management Agency and County Building Department were received indicating that no further requirements applied for parcels of 40 acres or larger in size. Circling back around, we'll touch on the access issue. Initially, access to Proposed Parcel 3 was going to be via the existing encroachment off of Watertown Road. I don't know if you can see, that exhibit's a little small. I've tried to circle the, I circled the three encroachments that were initially proposed, and then I pointed out the, the new road that is bisecting Parcel 3 for access to Parcel 2, if you can see that. You probably have a better view of that in your packet, in your packet, thank you. So, again, initially, access to parcel, Proposed Parcel 3 was via the existing encroachment off of Watertown Road. The existing roadway actually crosses a short segment of land owned by East Bay Mud. After the, after the project applicant could not obtain legal access by way of deeded easement or purchase of East Bay Mud property, the tentative map was revised, which now includes access to Parcel 3, 2, and 3 by way of a 50-foot common access and public utility easement through Parcel 2 from the existing encroachment off of Watertown Road. The Public Works Department submitted revised comments, which now include the requirement to not only improve the encroachments to minor collector approach, but also to improve the proposed access road for Parcells 2 and 3 to a minimum service template G roadway standard. Pursuant to CEQA guidelines, an initial study was completed, finding no significant impacts to the environment, and a negative declaration was prepared. The initial study and negative dec were noticed for a 30-day review and comment period from December 29, 2021, to January 31, 2022, for which the department received no comments at all. So, based on the consistencies with the general plan policies and implementation measures, also finding that the proposed tentative map is consistent with the Title 16 subdivision ordinance, as well as the county zoning ordinance, Title 17, and the design and the conditions of the tentative map have found no significant effect on the environment, staff's recommendation to you is that we approve the tentative parcel map and adopt the negative declaration. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I'm confused a bit about the, the new access road.
Okay.
Of Parcel 3. I believe there's an inconsistency in paragraph four of the resolution, which says Parcel 3 will be accessed from an existing paved easement off of Watertown Road, which is, I understand from the staff report, that's been replaced by this easement road.
Okay, um...
On page three of the resolution.
Page three?
Of the resolution.
Parcells 1 and 2 will access via the existing encroachments directly off of Camp Osaco Road and Watertown Road. Respectfully, in Parcel 3 will be accessed from the existing paved easement, oop. Thank you.
Give you a chance to...
That needs to be...
Clarify that before we get to the resolution.
Yes.
So, the staff analysis is accurate, that there's this new...
Yes.
New, and it, it shows on the, on the map, it shows that it's ending right at the boundary of Parcel 3.
Parcel 3, correct.
That's just to give it, give access to Parcel 3.
Accesses to the parcel itself, the improvement of access into the parcel to a future residence, say, will have to be built at the time of a building permit...
Yeah.
To the driveway standard, meeting fire and life safety regulations.
Okay, great, thank you.
Are there any other questions for Gina? Nope. Would the applicant like to speak?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Matt Tomlin with Tomlin Associates out of Jackson, here representing John and Roxy Hertzick. John is in the audience if you have any actual questions for the applicant. First, I want to thank planning staff for helping us through this process. It's been a little bit of a long one, but we've kind of muddled through it. Having to deal with trying to get access from East Bay Mud was a little bit of a, a little bit of a rough go, and that's why we decided to do the, the common driveway. But again, appreciate county staff helping us through this. The applicant agrees to all conditions as proposed. The only minor change we have is in regards to the common driveway through Parcel 1 serving Parcel 2 and 3. What our request would be, is it's, the, the condition is to build a, a, a road, a 20-foot-wide roadbed, all the way back to Parcel 3, due to its, its being common. Well, in fact, if you, if you look at the map, about two-thirds through of Parcel 2, you can see an existing roadway kind of taken off to the west, which is where that building site for Parcel 2 would be. And we would request would be to build the full 20-foot-wide road up to that point, the cul-de-sac at that point, and then at that point, doing just a driveway from there down to Parcel 3, because it's no longer a common use at that time. Yeah, that, that would be our only, only request for a little bit of an amendment to that condition, if possible. Other than that, let me say the applicant agrees with all, all conditions as proposed. So, the right-of-way would be the full 50-foot right-of-way, and again, this is a private road, would be a county-maintained road, up to that cul-de-sac point, and then that right-of-way would narrow down to the county standard that would meet fire and life safety requirements for just a single-use driveway to Parcel 3 from that point on, yeah. Just trying to eliminate some grading and, and, and cost and stuff like that. So, thank you.
I just want to say it, this is a very well-studied project.
Yes, it is.
I feel confident that it's okay with the environment.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Is there any member of the audience or online who would like to speak to this item? Nobody online, no one in the audience. We will close the public comment portion of the hearing.
So, looking at the resolution, I gave you a, a redlined version with, again, some grammatical spelling corrections, things like that.
Before you get to that...
Yes.
What about the applicant's suggestion about the...
About the red, well, um, any modifications to the, to the requirements from Public Works should have been addressed prior to today. I don't know if there's any, you know, discussion that we can have after approval with the Public Works Department that would not require us to have to come back to you, but in order for us to make that change today, they would have had to request a modification, unless, of course, Public Works finds that there's, you know, some health and safety issues, and I, I don't know. I mean, we can try to work with them offline after this, and if we find that a modification is needed in order to reduce that standard, then we'll have to come back before you.
There's also, from a CEQA perspective, the procedure for a change to a project description just requires a little bit more language, perhaps, in the resolution to make sure that that change is minor and will not have a, result in a significant change to...
So, we can take action on the resolution as it stands, and there's a...
I would recommend, if there's going to be a change on the ground, that we would have to do some more analysis and, and review and have to come back.
So, generally, if there's any request for, to modify the standard from the county standard, then that should have come in, in the form of a modification request? And, and unfortunately, this scenario kind of played out at the last minute, because we recognized that there was no legal access directly to Parcel 3 via the existing encroachment, and so it was kind of like a last-minute deal where they couldn't get legal access, so, you know, they proposed the amended map with the, the new driveway. Public Works reviewed it, and that's the comment that was directly received from Public Works that meets that minimum standard. Any, any variation from that should have been requested. We'd have to only do that through a modification, so...
But since it was not requested until now, but it does seem to, to me, makes sense.
And, and there might be, you know, depending on what it is, we'll have, we can sit down and talk with Robert Packenger and, you know, myself and the applicants, and, and Robert can sit down and we can discuss it. And if we find that it's necessary that a modification is needed, then we'll be back before you. Otherwise, you know, there may be something in the road ordinance that allows him to make such a, you know, a, maybe a minor modification. I don't know.
In my experience, I was shocked to see this. In my experience, exactly what he's asking for is what is required.
Yeah.
So...
And if that's the case, then maybe there's just a misrepresentation of what that's supposed to look like.
Right.
So, you know, I think, I think it's probably best that you just approve it as it is today. If we can go back and discuss the matter with Public Works, if there's some resolution to where we don't have to come back to you, then that's fantastic. Otherwise, you know, we may be back before you with a slight request for a modification.
I would like to ask the applicant, is this time-sensitive for you? Would you like to see us approve it with the existing conditions, or do you have the time for it to go back to Public Works?
Yeah, the applicant would basically just like to, to keep it the way it is, pretty much just like what Gina said.
Okay.
If we can work out something with, with Mr. Packenger to, to modify it at, at that time without having to come back through the process for a, for a minor little change like that, then that's fine, but otherwise, we'll just approve it as is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so we should get on to the resolution.
Okay, so, you got a little redlined version showing some corrections that we made since the packet went out.
A second version.
Yeah. And just as a result, as, as early as last night, we had the addition of two new findings, and those are... Oops, I already see a mistake.
Yeah.
Not seven and seven, seven and eight.
Eight.
Yeah. And those are, those findings are relative to, to government code sections 4290 and 4291. In a nutshell, the project as proposed was circulated to Cal Fire, our local building department, who regulates fire and life safety regulations, our county public works department, in addition to our local fire agency, which we received literally no comments from any of those agencies relative to 4290 and 4291. As proposed, we feel that, you know, fire protection services, all of those, you know, applicable code requirements are met, or can be met, without any, without any problems or revisions to the conditions of the map.
I have a question as to...
Yes.
The first seven.
The first seven.
It, it, there's no requirement that the homes utilize passive or natural heating cooling? Is this just a statement that it's...
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear you.
That the... I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I was looking at six.
Oh, okay.
Let's, let's look at six.
Let's look at six, okay.
Okay. Proposed subdivision provides, to the extent possible, for future passive or natural heating/cooling opportunities for proposed new parcels, and the evidence is that lots are a sufficient size to accommodate homes to utilize that. So, I see, so that the, the conditions, no, but this isn't a condition, this is, this is part of the resolution.
It's a finding.
I don't, I don't quite understand how paragraph six works. The proposed subdivision provides, what, where does this, where's the provision for future passive or natural heating/cooling?
It's that it's not creating lots so small that one, development on one parcel is going to preclude ac, solar access to another, or the possibility of geothermal, or any of those other potential.
So, with parcels of 40 acres in size, I think there's ample room.
Yeah.
Just ample room, that's what provides, not that there's any provision somewhere that requires it.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. I do have some suggestions for the resolution.
Okay.
One, on, on page one, on the "Be it therefore resolved," once you say tentative parcel map, I think you should have TPM in quotes and in parentheses, so that later, when you use TPM, the public would know what you're talking about. On page two, there's an extra "will be reviewed" in evidence of paragraph two, right down toward the end, where you have the new "will be reviewed," and then there's another, I think it's the old "will be reviewed" that can be eliminated.
Well, there are two different reviews. One is planning and zoning, and one is the building department. It's just sort of an awkward...
And a future development "will be reviewed" for compliance with building setbacks and height.
Yeah, I agree. I think it sounds better if you, if you omit the section.
Sure.
Or there's just a comma in front of "and" if it's too different to purpose.
Well, yeah. It doesn't say what the building permit process is going to review, so that for that...
That would be, that would be planning department's review of a building permit.
I'm all in favor of review, but not double review.
It's just, just the sentence, not the concept.
Yeah. Then paragraph four, we have this question about the easement, paved easement off of Watertown Road for Parcel 3.
Okay, I'll make that, I'll make those changes.
Okay. And then on page five, down on condition 3-2, the first time you use the letters P-U-E, I think it should be preceded with a spell about public utility easement, and then the P-U-E in parentheses and quotation marks. And then on page six, three dash four, subdivision F, somehow the word event now is without its N.
Oh, yes.
And that's, that's what I have. I appreciate all the corrections that have been made, and I feel the fine hand of Commissioner Wooster in this.
Commissioner Wooster, do you have anything additional? So, I have a question, and this is for my own education, because I, I support the addition of Julie's conditions here, but the heading says that these are mandatory findings for subdivisions, and this is a parcel map. And so is a parcel map a subdivision in this context?
Yes, it's actually from a government code section that requires findings of compliance with the fire safe standards. There's two findings, and I did check to make sure that it wasn't just for subdivisions, and yes, it's also.
Thank you.
Commissioner Parker, any comments, questions, suggestions?
No, actually. I know it's a really dry area up there. I see my neighbors driving down the road with tanks on the back of their trailers, and I see that there's a couple of wells. I'm curious, I'm looking on this end of parcel map, I don't see anywhere on here where they're identified where the wells are. Where, what parcels are they on? And I see they also have two, I guess, wastewater systems out there, is that what I also saw? Yeah. Curious where they're at. And have they drilled any other wells on the property? How do they know that they produce?
That will be a question of the applicant, because I'm not aware of.
Okay, because I know that water isn't.
Right, and there, unfortunately, with a parcel that size, there is no regulations to impose on the map.
We could actually subdivide.
No.
One partially dry parcel into three really dry parcels.
Yes, but they won't be able to develop it.
Right. So in order to develop a single-family residence, they will have to have water.
Sure, I understand. It just seems counterintuitive to.
You're right.
Keep splitting this up.
Right.
When we're not having any water to provide for them. That's just my view on the subject.
Yeah.
Because it's dry out there.
Right.
There's no water to speak of. Okay. That was my comment.
Yeah, I think, I think we don't get to ask about it.
Okay.
Because there is no requirement. I mean, you can ask, but.
Yeah, well, I'd like to be, yeah, because it's new to me. I've only been here for a short time, and this is a learning process.
Well, and actually, this might even be the first map that we've had before you, because I was trying to.
It is.
After Julie, after Julie and I had the conversation about those two findings, it dawned on me, we haven't had a map before you in.
For a long time.
Quite a long time.
I'm becoming educated on the subject.
Yeah.
Certainly we all. I mean, I've been around for years, and I still get.
There's always something new.
Okay. If there's nothing else, we're ready for the recommendation?
Okay. Staff recommends the planning commission take the following actions. Adopt resolution 2022-001, approving tentative parcel map 2014-023, based on the findings and conditions in, based on the findings in the staff report, and adopt the negative declaration.
As revised.
As revised, thank you.
I believe that we adopt the resolution as revised, and the, whatever else we need to adopt at this point.
Environmental documents, everything. And a second?
Oh, second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Can I abstain?
You, you may.
Yeah.
Who would like to abstain? So passes three, zero, one, and a missing commissioner.
This item is final unless appealed to the board supervisors within 15 calendar days.
And possibly you can spend a little bit of this time before it goes to the board, trying to sort out the driveway.
This, this action will not go to the board unless it's appealed.
That's right.
Yeah, so, so at this point, you know, we can get together with Robert Pakenger, and we can talk about your proposal and see where that goes.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, where's, I've, I've lost my agenda again.
Thank you for your patience.
You are most welcome. I wondered about that, 2014.
Yeah, this, you know, we were, Matt and I were just talking about it before the meeting. Unfortunately, this poor application has just gone through this series of unfortunate events with staff changes and, you know, the, the biologist, you know, not being extremely clear, and then the access issue, and it's just been one thing after another, and finally, finally, we got it done.
Good job. So, I'm sure we'll see the, the oak woodland ordinance back, but it is not, has been removed from the agenda for today. Are there any commissioner reports? John, can you remind us of the dates that you're going to be unavailable?
Yeah, July the 10th through. I'll try and find help, but I don't think that's going to happen. It's very difficult. It looks like I could potentially be back on the 11th of August. But other than that, I think every day is.
Okay.
The 7th, the 7th is the last day I'd be able to be here, July.
So July 7th through?
Through the 11th of August.
So my commissioner's report is a commissioner's question. Is any indication we're going to get another commissioner?
Yeah.
Madam Chair, members of the planning commission, we do already have a new commissioner, and I think her first date would be maybe the?
First meeting in July.
First meeting in July.
Great, it's perfect.
Yeah.
Actually, I see that she's in the audience, if she might want to.
Thank you, Gina.
Hi, my name's Cory Fisk, and I'll be representing District Five, and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to assist with the planning commission. I have a general contractor's license, Class A. I have been a facility director for multiple districts, have dealt with planning commissions before, so I hope that my experience will assist in some of what you're going to be doing. I've worked with Michelle before, too, so thank you very much.
Welcome aboard.
Yes, look forward to it.
Well, that's exciting.
Yeah.
New commissioner. Anything else from the commissioners? Anybody? Planning Director?
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the planning commission. At your last planning commission meeting, you had some questions regarding housing permits and things of that nature, and I have some answers for you, and for the future. Would you rather I give you the director's report in writing, or would you rather I did it verbally? Either one is fine with me, but if I give it to you in writing, then you have something you can take with you, but I can give it to you orally as well, so just a matter of preference. The first one I wanted to touch on is the greenhouse gas contract. Remember, we were talking about whether or not, I was able to verify that the consultants can actually come back for one more planning commission meeting, which would include them incorporating, having incorporated all of your comments, all the hard work, into a presentation for which you would now have the opportunity to question them. So, and we do have room in the budget for that. So I, I, they thought they were, you know, exceeding the budget, but when we actually took a look at the numbers, there's still room for some monies. And if there isn't, and then the, the, the county of government will, will cover whatever the overflow is. The other item had to do with vacation rentals. You had wanted to know how were we trending on vacation rentals, especially since the passing of the housing element. To date, as of June 10, which was the last time we checked, there are 266 active vacation rentals in the county, so for your information.
Meaning that TOT funds are collected from them?
Yes.
Thank you.
Meaning, yeah, meaning the ones we could actually verify as legitimate. Right. And then on the issue of building permit activity for residential development, I'm going to give you kind of a year by, for the year 2000, there were 84 building permits for residential housing, which consisted of ADUs, manufactured housing, and single-family homes. 84 were finalized, and 25 permits were actually issued for 2000. In 2001, there were 78 permits issued, so I, I think you can see a progression. We went from 2000, we went from 25 in 2000 to 78 in 2001, and 2002 to date, we have 66. So, you know, I think if we continue to trend in this fashion, we may be able to meet some of our revenue numbers, which, if you want, I can provide you with a comparison as to which one of these housing components fall into what category of the, of the county's revenue allocations. But, so the good news is, we're actually building houses. The question is whether or not we're building them fast enough that by the eighth year, which is the year, you know, which is the time, timeframe for the housing element, whether we would have enough to meet all the categories of housing in the county.
So for, in 2022, there were 66 permits issued?
So far.
So far? Do we know in, so you said 2000 and 2001, but is it really 2020 and 2021, those previous numbers?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So, wow, that's really weird.
That's choosing a double zero.
Yes.
Yeah, it's 2021 and 2022, and then 2020. So 2021 and 22.
Well, in response to your question about written or oral, I think something like today's.
Yes.
Would be handy if it were written. I think, I leave it to your discretion.
Right.
I don't need to print up papers with something, I have nothing to report.
I actually have something that I think might be handy to you, but, you know, I don't have enough copies, but I can, we can easily.
Yeah, just email it to us afterwards would be great.
Yeah, yeah, so that way you have at least a record. And I, and I wanted to make sure that, you know, I wasn't doing any kind of tampering with brown act issues.
Right, right.
Staff can send it, and they can't talk about it or reply.
Even though, even though the planning director's report is on the agenda.
It is agendized.
I, I meant for after.
Oh, yes.
For after.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else from anybody else before we adjourn at 10:05? Good job, everybody.
Short work.
And good luck on the summer camp.
I have, actually, I have one question, which is, I don't believe that we have chosen a vice chair because we had swapping around happen. And should we do that at, at the next meeting, when Cory will have an opportunity to vote?
And, and an opportunity to be the vice chair.
Mostly because I.
You want to be the vice chair.
I was only here today for that reason. I was out of town, I came back for this. I don't see that I'm going to miss any other meetings, but.
Madam Chair, I would, I would only, I would only recommend that we do that when we have the full planning commission.
Yeah.
When all five commissioners are present.
Well, we're not going to have that.
We're not going to have that for a while.
Until August. Yeah, you know, yeah, that's, that would be my recommendation.
It's you, it's just you.
Thanks.
Given the circumstances, I think maybe we ought to.
If, if you wanted to, just for that vote, you could join us with Zoom.
Okay, yeah, I could do that.
Right, you could do that.
Yeah, I would be willing to do that. I always want to try and be here, I've made efforts, you know, I, I race back whenever I can.
So if you're joining for Zoom, there's a, you have to post. There is a, we don't have a reservation place allowing.
Yeah, that's right.
For remote meetings, and it's, you have to invite the public to where.
So is that something that you're adamant you'd like to have addressed prior to August?
I don't see that I'm going to miss any meetings between now and then, but just if something were to happen.
There's no, there's no law that says you have to have all five, no, because I know that's right.
Yeah, I think we can, we can do it unless you have strong feeling that you want to share with somebody.
As long as it's not me.
With one other commissioner, yeah.
You go ahead and choose.
Well, actually, Michelle, you're the vice chair now, aren't you?
Yes, but I.
So we need to elect a chairperson.
Yeah, actually.
Right, and then a vice chair, or.
Be careful, Kelly.
You're really good at this. I'm for that. Oh, wow, you just disclosed that? It's your turn. I've only been here for a year and a half, so. I'm a trainee.
We, we should take care of that, both items. Make everything official next, next meeting.
Love it.
Thank you.